Okay. Call the North Reading School Committee to order for February 24th, 2014. First order of business is public input. And seeing nobody from the public who wishes to make input, that's not on the agenda. We'll move to our next item, which is a student report. And tonight we have Jackie Lanzaro.
Thank you. For sports, girls' basketball has their first state game this Wednesday at home at seven versus Latin Academy. Wrestling had states this past week. Four people qualified for all states. Two of them were from North Reading and two of them from Linfield. The two from North Reading were Joe Morris and Joe Wise. Boys' basketball has their states game this Thursday at Stonem. Hockey won Cal's last Friday night versus Linfield. And they have their first states game this Friday at Stonem at five. And they will be playing the winner of the Marblehead versus Haverhill game. Track had the states, had their states the Wednesday before vacation. Swim had their states Saturday, February 15th and the 16th. Then moving on from sports, we had the blood drive the Tuesday before vacation, which was a great turnout. For Valentine's Day, Samantha's Harvest sold carnations and student council sold cupcakes. The sophomores had their assembly for course selection today. And the junior course selection forms are due February 28th. NIAS, the accreditation committee, is coming Sunday the 2nd to Wednesday the 5th. On Sunday, it starts at 12 with a welcoming ceremony. And the student senate is taking them around for tours on Monday morning. Student council is going to the MAS C State Conference at Hyannis from Wednesday the 5th to Friday the 7th. Sports awards are the 11th and the SATs are Saturday the 8th. For my project, in AP English Language and Composition, my teacher is Ms. Davriel and she assigned a slang dictionary. So we had to come up with 25 terms that students at North Reading High School use often. So I'll share a few of them with you. One of them was chill. It's a verb, to spend time together, to relax together. The synonyms, to hang out. Clutch, which is an adjective. Great, awesome, convenient, happening at the perfect time, essential. Dope, which is an adjective. Extremely awesome, pleasant, likable, and/or attractive, cool. And fresh, which is an adjective, which means fashionable, modern, cool, of high quality, usually in relation to the material possessions people own, stylish. The purpose of this assignment was to analyze how language changes over the years. And she also shared with us, and she's been teaching this course for multiple years, she saves a slang dictionary from every year. So we were able to see how slang has modernized and changed over the years.
Do you have any questions for Jackie?
Was dude on that list?
No.
No?
How about the word wicked?
No.
Like no wicked, cool, or wicked?
We're all behind the list.
Yeah, we're just, we're way out of it. We're way out.
I got to tell my dad I was going to call you dude.
Dude, yeah. So you mentioned the NIAS, will be here, NIAS will be here this week to, for the reaccreditation of the high school. And I know the school committee, I believe we will meet with them on Sunday afternoon at 2:00, 2:15?
You will be meeting with them at 2:15 in the library.
At the high school.
That's correct. And I just want to, I gave Jackie the time of noon and it is actually 1:00 that the welcome starts with the panel presentation.
And the committee members will be paid double time on Sunday, right?
Triple.
Oh, absolutely, triple. Triple time.
We can only hurt our chances of getting reaccredited if we're there, so.
That's true. That's the thing. I mean, maybe only some of us should go. We'll have to see. What, I do want to mention the, another great sports season, the hockey team. I think it may be the best record we've ever had in hockey.
Certainly the best record since 1995, I can tell you that.
16, 2, and 2 for a final record for the season. It was a great year.
Had a great season, still they're doing the playoffs. And the wrestling team won the division, uh, came in second.
Right.
Division three state meet.
States, yeah. So how is it coming back from the first day after break?
Rough, because all the tests that I had on Thursday, which was a snow day, got moved to today. So it was rough.
So you were hoping for a snow day or something, I would imagine, but.
Yeah.
Did you go, did you go someplace warm during the vacation or?
No.
No?
I wish.
Any other questions for Jackie? Thanks Jackie.
Thank you.
Have a good, have a good week.
Thanks.
Okay. And I think next we'll move to, we have Judy Diamond for our North Reading representative to the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational High School. We also have superintendent director Ted Nicoli, is that correct?
Nicoli.
Nicoli.
Yes.
And they're here, one of our goals that we set was to get annual or so reports from our representative and to meet the superintendent and hear what's going on at the school and ask questions. And that's why you're here tonight. So Judy or?
I'll start first.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for inviting us here tonight. It's always nice. It makes us feel like we're part of the team and I think that's important. We had a school committee meeting last week and I mentioned it to my fellow colleagues and they were very jealous that their community doesn't do the same thing. So thank you very much for that. I'll just give you some of the statistics that I'm sure you're interested in. We are a level three, a level one school for the third year in a row, which is very, very nice to be able to tell you. We had a graduation rate last year of 96.5 percent. We have 28 students this year from North Reading.
Wow.
And that number, I think, is one of the highest we've had. So we're very, very pleased about that. I think the word is getting out of the value of vocational education that makes us happy. We've had positive placement. We had 281 students graduate. And of that number, 71 are going on to attend a four-year college. 84 are attending a two-year college. 11 are in an apprentice school. 104 are employed in their trade area and 16 entered the military. We had 100 percent success rate of MCAS again this year, which is huge and I'm very pleased to tell you that. We implemented co-op last year. Again, we brought it back. We did away with it for a couple of years because of finances. And we brought it back last year with the popular demand of irate parents attending our school committee meetings. And this year we have 50 students to date out on co-op. So that, that's a good number and we're glad we brought that back. The biggest change in our school last year is the new administrative staff that we have. We have a new superintendent, which I'm pleased to have with me tonight, a new principal. And we've made some significant changes. And, and I think the biggest one is our new administrators, we're very, very pleased with that. And Ted is always right on board when I ask him and any committee member asks him to accompany us, he's always right there and it's very much appreciated. So I'm going to turn it over to Ted. I'd like you to get to know him. He's a great guy and I'm sure between the two of us, we can answer any of the questions you might have.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And like Judy says, I'm delighted that we were invited here tonight. This is fantastic. And I hope it spreads to the other communities more often. This is my 33rd year in vocational education. And I've been at vocational school in Wakefield 27 years. So if you have any questions, I pretty much know where all the, all the bones are buried and all the, all the valves to shut off, so.
Ask who I.
I began as a welding teacher. I did that for 19 years. Then I was vice principal and then vocational coordinator, then principal, and now superintendent. So I've been there a long time. One of the things that, that we strive for, as Judy said, you know, we want to be there for your students that want a little bit different direction. And they're all the same kids. We're all on the same team. And when you have a student that you feel, you know, wants to go in that little direction, we want to be there for them. We want to encourage them and we don't want to hold them back though. If they decide they want to go to college, we want to have the curriculum in place for them, that they don't get held back because they chose to go to the vocational school. And that's been a real effort on our part the last four, four years or so. We have students that, that go into a four-year school, but they have tremendous success in a four-year school. Reason being that they're focused. We have the girls that go through the nursing program. They do three years in nursing program. They know they want to be nurses. There, there's no question in their mind. They do well. They go into nursing school, they do the four years and get out. Where, I had a nephew that graduated just a few years ago from Saugus. And when he went to college, he switched three majors. And he did fine. He's doing great now, but he really stumbled his first couple of years in college. And we had to really push him to stay in college. So that's what we find a lot of times with our students that go, our kids in drafting and design, they'll go into Wentworth or WPI or University of Lowell for engineering. So we have good success that way. But one of the things we're trying to do is, is stay up with the cutting edge of technology. That's one of the differences. That's what we understand, that the Readings, the North Readings, Stonem, they can't afford that machinery and that technology. And that's why we have a district vocational school. So one of the things that we do is we try to save every bit of Perkins money, everything that we can do to really increase our technology. One of the new programs that Judy worked with us this year is we created a STEM Academy, like most high schools are doing. But we're trying to work that STEM Academy into more hands-on engineering style rather than just chemistry and physics. So the way this, the academy is going to work is 11th graders and 12th graders will go in one day a week from their shop. And it'll start off in drafting and design. So you may have a student that's a plumber, but he wants to learn or she wants to learn a little pre-engineering. So they'll, they'll go to drafting and design, they'll learn to draw, they learn to dimension things. Then they'll actually create a part. That part will then be rapid prototyped in a rapid prototyping machine, so it'll come out in plastic. That plastic part will move to the robotics lab in ISSN. They'll learn to design a program for, for CNC machine. That'll come off on a flash drive. That flash drive will go to metal fabrication. They'll plug it into the plasma cam cutter. The plasma cam cutter will cut the parts out. They'll get finished. Then we just purchased a robotic welding arm that'll weld that piece. Then it gets shipped over to Autobody, it'll get painted and then put together and packaged. And then we formed a cohort with Shawshin in, in Bilrika. Because they have some machinery that we don't have and we have some things that they, that they don't have. So we'll send the part to Shawshin and then they'll unpackage it and they'll have to assemble that into something else that they created. So everything will have to fit. So it's, it's the perfect mix for this, that everyone talks about advanced machining and how we're losing this, this ability to do things in our country. So we're trying to make, make the best of the equipment that we have and, and work with other vocational schools. And that's the way things are done now, that you, you might draw something here in Massachusetts, it gets shipped to Michigan, two pieces get built there, two pieces get built in Maine, and they get assembled in, in Texas. And that's what we're trying to do. And that's our big push this year with that. And the other thing that we're looking for is, I'm working with the MSBA for a statement of interest.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask you that tonight.
Yeah. Our building's 45 years old. We just had a NIAS accreditation. They passed us with flying colors with our education, our curriculum, you know, everything else except the facility. And they said, we just can't pass you for the facility. And I had the team come in from MSBA and they just looked and said, you're the poster child for MSBA. You're, you're built for 900 students. You have 1,250. You're breaking off at the seams. You have students from urban settings, suburban settings, high levels of income, low levels of income. It, it's just a perfect demographic. And you have the land. They say a lot of the problems I ran into is people don't have the land.
We have, we know about that. Yeah, we had improvised here, so.
You don't have the site.
So, you know, they, they walked around and then I, you know, it's a catch 22. You folks, you know exactly what I'm saying. You don't want to make it so bad that, that they want to condemn your building, but you have to show them what's wrong.
Right.
We have sections of the floor that are, that are sinking down. We just had an oil leak in an underground tank. Our pool drains are rotted out. You know, I had an auto, I signed a slip for the maintenance. I'm saying, my God, how many barrels can they need? I'm signing this thing for trash barrels. They were for the leaks. They weren't for the, they weren't for throwing trash in. They were for the leaks in the roof. So, you know, so we're, we're working towards that now and making a serious effort. And I just met with three of my local town managers, one from Chelsea, one from Saugus, and one from Wakefield, to get their feel of it, their ideas of how we should do it, if we should try to put a feasibility study into the budget or if we should try to fund a bond or a note, an anticipatory note. So we're still working that out. So that's kind of where we, where we stand with that.
How does, so when you have, how many communities are at the school?
Twelve.
So when you have a project, a building project, it's somehow spread among the 12 communities?
By enrollment.
Plus there's state aid.
Right.
And the state aid, I'm assuming is, you have, as you mentioned, you have so many different demographics at the school. And is there also another fund that is geared toward, is there more funding that's geared specifically toward vocational schools when they're built or?
Yes. And my reimbursement rate is, has the potential to be 73 percent.
Right. That's, we figured it'd be pretty high.
73 percent.
That's great.
It's really good.
Move all far right now.
Wish we could get that.
Yeah, I know. I met with, with Mike Tempesta from Saugus, the superintendent from Saugus, and he almost jumped over the table. He says, I'm trying to get 45 of 50.
What do we get? 49.2.
49.2, yeah. So we're very lucky.
Yeah.
So that's all we have to do is get, but it's a lot of work. You folks know how much work it is.
Have you submitted the statement of interest or you're still in the process?
We're still in the process now because we have to get the money for the feasibility study first and get that solidified. Because our E and D is, we only have like 300,000 in E and D. And with a 45-year-old building, I mean, I'm in the construction trades. We have these Cleaver Brooks boilers that they retrofitted from the Mayflower. I think they took them off, you know?
They're getting into Cliff's territory now.
Yeah, so.
Not the restored one.
You know.
We also need all 12 communities to vote for our school in order to get a new school, which is really going to be a huge challenge for us, which we feel is unfair.
But with that kind of reimbursement, I mean, with that kind of reimbursement, that's spreading it out over 12 communities, it's, it seems like a no-brainer, but it is hard sometimes to.
It's very difficult. And that's the biggest challenge that we have ahead of us.
Well, and when you think about it, here, our, our residents, and Judy lives here, made a huge commitment, not once, but twice, to 120 million dollar projects. So, you know, we, even if you try to sell that pro, you know, the new project, when, once your school is ready to go before the voters, you have to convince people who've already ponied up a couple of times for a new high school.
Right. Because some of your communities have already had projects.
Right.
What we try to convince them is we're, they're a second high school to them as well. All 12 communities. We offer a great program for the student population looking for vocab in their communities. So we're hoping to get that support.
And the North Shore part, North Shore, the new school over there, they're combining Essex Aggie.
Yes.
The north, former North Shore Tech and also I think the PBD High School.
Yes.
Vote program.
Right.
So was, how many communities did they have to convince? Do you know?
Well, it was a different ballgame because agricultural schools, there's so few of them, the state steps in.
Oh, that's what I was thinking about. Okay, that's what I was thinking about then when I get.
It was a little bit different scenario.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments?
Oh, it seems like you're doing a really great job. I, I listened into the, the progress you've made in, on making something and thinking, let me see, how could I possibly get enrolled?
Yeah, I know that, yeah. I feel the same way sometimes when I want to go back into the shop.
Probably have to go in the senior class.
Right.
I'm, I'm still thinking about a 3D printer.
Yes. Things are fantastic.
I'm not sure it's time yet, but.
One of the things I think is interesting, and I don't know how long this has been in process, but the change, when, when we were back in high school, the Volk school meant the Volk school. You went there, you came out, you were going to be an electrician, a plumber. Not many students from the Volk schools went to college back in the 70s and, you know? So I'm interested in that change and how, you know, what, you mentioned the numbers, but what percentage of the students actually go to college out of your senior class?
It's right around 50 percent.
Okay.
59, isn't it 59?
It might be 59. But, you know, and like I said, the difference that we see is, is they go to enhance their vocational experience in, in, because if a student just wants to go to Harvard to be a journalist, they should stay here.
Right.
And I want them to stay here. I don't, I want to, I want to make room for kids that really want to get into vocational ed. And if they want to go to college, they want to gear it towards their career tech area.
I was going to say, can't you discourage them from going to college and go right into the trades so they can go out there?
You know.
I mean, with this project going on in North Reading, I mean, I'm up there almost as much as Cliff.
Yep.
And it's, it's fascinating.
Yeah.
I mean, it's absolutely fascinating to see the way they do things now, the way all the stuff comes in and it's pre, you know, fitted and pre-cut and, I mean, I mean, to watch the project managers up there and the superintendents and the tradespeople and the, and the foreman, the supervisor, it's unbelievable. It's just unbelievable to see the way they pull it together. And, and the trades, I mean, the multiple trades we have up there, the HVAC and the electrical, the plumbing and the, the masonry and everything, it's just, it's a fascinating, I, I could go up there and watch them every day and it's just amazing.
And one of the things we, we do is we try to really educate the students with all aspects of the industry. Because, you know, I had parents come to me when I was a welding teacher, said, well, my daughter wants welding, but I don't want her up in the I-beams.
Yeah.
I'm like, I can understand that, but there's so.
It is pretty cool watching.
It is pretty cool. But there's so many very delicate, fine type of welding, you know, so that there's many, many different things that they can get involved in. I just got a job for one of my students. I had a friend of mine that runs a concrete pumping company in Wakefield. And he's done very well. He has many, many trucks. And he called me up and says, I want a student that has mechanical ability, that can run one of these trucks, but can also understand hydraulics, how the motors work, when the motor's rapping, when, when they're down, I want to be able to work on a truck. So I called one of my students up that graduated last year. He went right down for the interview. They took him through everything, drug tested him, did this, this, and this, sent him to the, kid came up, he hugged me, picked me up, he's bouncing me around. And he got the job.
And then his father probably hugged you too.
So he's 19 years old. And I ran into the fellow that hired him. He says, you know what that kid's making? I said, no. He says, he'll probably average 83,000 this year.
Oh, yeah. The pipe fitters, everybody. It's amazing.
He's 19!
And when you go, but when you go over there and watch it, it's just.
And they all make very good living.
Very, very, very good.
Yeah, yeah. I'm very proud of my kids. I really am.
And another benefit of the vocational education in the trades with our students going on to college is we all are aware of the financial burden it is to, to have your kiddos going to college. I mean, I put three.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm well aware of that. That was years ago. Our kids are working in their trade areas, most of them, and, and paying for their own college, which is a tremendous opportunity.
It's a parent's dream.
Yeah.
How does the co-op work? Is that you, you work with local companies to have stu, how many days a week do they work with the company?
Well, the way that our program's set up is there's an A and B week. So one week there'll be ninth graders and 11th graders in shop. And then the 10th and 12th will be in academic classes. And then it swaps every other week. So if a student qualifies for co-op as senior year, they have to have very good attendance, they can't have any discipline problems, and they have to have a grade above an 80, on average, above an 80. If they qualify for that, then they're eligible for co-op. If they are eligible, then they go out their whole shop week. So say a young student gets a job with a carpenter, they won't come to school at all. He or she will go right to the job site Monday morning, work all week. They get, they get paid, you know, they make four, $500 in the week.
And they get real hands-on experience.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And then they have to do a documentation of what they've done. And the employer has to fill out the paperwork of what they've done and what they're working on, what competencies they're, they're attaining that they may not have had the opportunity to get at school. Because, you know, school's limited. There's, there's certain things, we teach all the basics, but next thing you know, these students are out putting up A-frame homes and putting up, you know, three-story buildings where they don't, they couldn't get that complete opportunity at school. So they come back on their other week and they share it with the class, the other students that aren't them.
Yeah, that's great.
And it's kind of a win-win.
Yeah.
They, they get to brag a little bit about what they've done, but the other students gain that, that knowledge in the, in the related classroom with them. And it really works out well. And we found that year after year, we have people hiring our students, the same companies many times.
Yeah. And none of them are working for minimum wage.
Those are pretty impressive numbers too. 96.5 percent graduation, 100 percent MCAS success for a 1,250 student, you know, school.
We're lucky.
We have a great staff that just really works hard with the kids and.
I'm a huge fan of vocational education. I, I'm also a huge fan of college, but as you were saying, I think a lot of students go to college and they're somewhat misdirected or, you know, they don't really know their direction. So when they go from your school, they, they have a direction. I think we, we place, college is great, but we place so much of a value of it that I think a lot of kids think they have to go to college, they have to go to regular high school and they have to go to college to be successful. And then we have all these issues now with students in their first year of college, they're not prepared for college. And maybe they weren't cut out for college. And I'm going to, and I know I've been reading more about, they want to get more vocational aspect, education aspects into the community colleges now. They're, they're talking more about that. So I think anything that we can do to support vocational education, I would always support it. Because I think it's, I think it's, it's a necessity, especially when given the shortage. Try, you know, try to get a plumber to your house, try to get an electrician to your house, try to find one that'll even answer the phone.
Yeah.
It's, it's really difficult.
Yeah.
And the opportunities are there. So I'm really happy you came tonight and enlightened us. And anybody has any more questions? Karen?
I have, well, I have two.
I'm sorry, Cliff.
I was wondering if you told me what your NIAS experience was like apart from sort of the facility piece, because we're obviously going through that this week actually, so it's frightening.
Yeah, it was rather grueling, to say the least.
You're supposed to say, oh, it was wonderful. Don't worry about it.
It, it almost, more so for the people doing the evaluation. Those poor people were getting up at 6 o'clock in the morning, they were at our school by 7:00. We were, we had all our teams working with them. We were, we had all our teams working with them, um, and they worked right through lunch, and then they were up till eleven o'clock at night doing their reports. It, it's a lot of work for the, for the NEESK team that's there. But we found that they were very, they were interested in what we were doing, which I felt-
And very involved.
Yeah, I felt good about that. I hate the fact if someone just comes and they're stamping this and that, they really wanted to know what we were doing, they wanted to know where our curriculum, where our vision for the future was with it, which I appreciated. And I think it, you know, it seemed to go very well. Things as far as the facility, you have no control over, at least till we, we, we tried to make the attempt to raise the money to, to repair it. They were very, very thorough as far as their interviews with the teachers. I felt like they should have spent a little bit more time with the administrative team because you need that conflicting, those conflicting views, but, you know, they were running out of time, too. So all in all, it was a decent experience. It, it wasn't, it wasn't anything where I felt like they were unfair to us at all. So you can kind of take it from there.
That's great to hear. I'm, I'm looking forward to this being behind us, but it's nice to know that people have gone through it.
Yeah.
Um, I think the only other question I have is around ways in which, I think I asked this the last time we were here, about ways we could work together, you know, on a more frequent or ongoing basis so we can either provide support or help find, you know, opportunities for partnerships in the community. I know you probably have lots of, of companies that are North Reading that work with you already, but I'm just sort of wondering what those partnerships are and if there's something that, that we could help you with or vice versa, you know, ways that we can continue to work together.
One of the things I started looking into is occasionally we'll get a very, very bright student that we can't challenge with the curriculum that we have. And we do the best we can. I just met with Steve Zrych from, from Wakefield and Mike Tempesta from Saugus, and we could look into it with, with North Reading also. If we have a student that, that is at that AP level, it would be nice to be able to have that student be able to come from the vocational school.
Oh, yeah.
Attend your, your AP classes for physics or chemistry, and just so they're challenged. And I know sometimes the superintendents have a hard time and the principals filling AP classes, so it might work out well, maybe even if we work as a full community together.
Right.
And the other thing is resources. As far as literature books, novels, it's crazy that I buy three hundred copies of Catcher in the Rye and you folks buy three hundred copies of Catcher in the Rye, and we're not even using them at the same time. That's something that we should form as twelve communities that we could just share resources, especially in, in novels, in textbooks, you know, even in science equipment. You buy microscopes nowadays, they're six hundred dollars for these electronic microscopes. If you're doing your labs in October, and we're doing ours in, in November or December, that's the type of thing that we could save tremendous money and really, you know, form a, form a huge team. So these are things that I've been thinking about since, since I'm responsible for the money, you know, so.
Cliff, uh, it's a little out of sequence here, but I'm, I went to Northeast and did the co-op program in college.
Yep.
And I, I co-opted with the same firm all the way through. And, and I find it a fantastic way to go to school. First off, I, I paid my entire way through school doing that.
Yep.
And secondly, by the time I was a junior and into my senior year, I was running whole projects.
Yeah.
Uh, people that got out of school and went to work for the firm were two or three, four years down the road before they could do that.
Yep.
Um, so it, it really is a, is a huge advantage, and it, it focuses you on what you need to do in order to be successful in your career.
What is it, Mike Rowe, the Dirty Jobs guy that says, you gotta get the boots on the roof? You know, and there's no substitute for that, to get in there and work in a real industry and see what it's like.
I don't care what job it is. You start at the, you start, when you start that, you start at the bottom and you step little increments all the way up.
Yep.
So by the time you get to be the journeyman or the master, you've been through all of those other steps, and not only do you know how to do all those other steps, but you know how all those people are thinking.
Yeah.
So when you go to manage them, you know what their mindset is.
Yeah.
And it helps considerably in, in your success rate.
I agree.
One thing that might be interesting, and I don't know if this would work or it makes sense, but it might be great to hear from some of our North Reading students. One of the things that, over the last few years that we've put in place here is we're hearing from a lot of students and teachers at our schools on a regular basis. We want to know what's going on in the schools, how the programs that we're funding are working, what might not be working, and how can we improve them. And so we, we often have students or, or teachers or administrators from the various buildings meeting with us. And it might be interesting to, I don't know what you think, Kathy, but to hear from some of our North Reading students, maybe that, you know, the older students, the seniors, what do they, what, you know, just have them come in and spend ten minutes talking to us, what kind of programs they're in, what are they doing, what their experience would be like.
I have an idea that might, might work out if we had one or two of our students come. We have a new promotional video that we just, just finished. The school committee hasn't even approved it yet, but within the next month it'll be approved.
You will?
Yeah, hopefully. I guess I'm putting a horse in front of the cat, in the event that it gets approved. To send two students to your meeting and play that video.
Okay, great.
And then, then they could answer questions for that. I think that would be a nice lead-in for it.
Because these kids, you know, twenty-eight kids is, is a, a pretty large number, and really no one here, we don't know who they are because we don't see them at our schools, at, at our high school, so we really don't know who they are. So it'd be nice to put some faces behind, you know, the kids who are, who are there.
And I know their, uh, middle school teachers would probably enjoy seeing them. Because that's where they, they lose that.
Right.
They get out of middle school and, and then they-
I, I have one last question, Judy. How, how is it working on a twelve-person school committee?
Um, very well. Yeah, they, yeah, they, they can't pass too much past me. In fact, Ted and I came into the school at the same time as teachers, so I'm like the proud mother watching him work his way up. And I was part of the search committee for the new superintendent, and it was very difficult not to be going. But he, no, it's, it's challenging, it's interesting, and I encouraged a lot of retirees to, to get involved in their school committees.
Yeah, I agree with that. Otherwise you don't have the time.
It, it's particularly interesting during negotiations.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, we have, we have, yes.
Yeah, well, we're just starting.
We are, we're doing all of ours this year except for the teachers. The teachers are in an off-year now because one year we did a four-year deal with them, so the teachers are next year, but I think seven or eight other groups we're negotiating with this year, we're just, just getting started.
But being, you know, a former teacher, it's, you know, they're over there thinking, oh, she's on our side, and they're over here thinking, oh, she knows what's going on, so it's, it's, I enjoy it, I really do.
So you keep them guessing, huh?
I had to do it for a long time.
She keeps them guessing.
Keeps them guessing, that's right.
I'm sorry?
Keep them guessing.
Oh, I do! Would you say I do?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that, that- Good luck with the feasibility study, too.
Well, thank you very much.
It's time.
Thank you.
And you're invited anytime any of you would like to come down to the school, you'd call Ted and he'd be glad to, you know, have you for lunch.
Last year I had Woben in, the school committee from Woben.
Oh, really?
And I had them for a nice lunch, and then I took them for-
That's a good idea.
For a tour of the building. I'd love to have you folks.
I'd love it.
You said free food.
Yeah, free food, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's a good idea.
Now, you had a, you have quite a good hockey team this year, don't you?
Yes, yeah, we just won, uh-
All the last couple of games, right?
We just won our division, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and we won the-
Northeast has always had pretty-
Great football teams, too.
Two Super Bowls in a row.
Two Super Bowls, right, yeah.
And, uh-
That's what we pay at most attention to.
Right, that's what Jerry and I, right.
As far as measuring success. As far as measuring success.
Yeah.
And I know some students who've been on the different teams down there who I coached in youth, uh, youth sports, were my son's age, so I know that, I think they're out of the school now, but I, I know they went through and played lacrosse or basketball or soccer or football, so.
Yeah.
And they had a great time.
Yeah, we're very well represented in sports.
Right, right.
You're lucky.
Well, great, well, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much for inviting us.
Judy, if you could maybe work with Kathy and, or Ted and set up that, to have, when that video is, is ready and have the students come in, that'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, or we could even have you there as, as a luncheon and then have the students eat lunch with you.
Sure.
You know, we can invite them to have lunch and you can see the video.
Yeah.
It's up to you folks.
No, that'd be, that'd be fun. Why don't you try to, we can set that up, settle up through the superintendent's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great.
All right.
And we're, we're anxious to see the new school. I, I go by it every day and I'm just amazed.
It is, it is unbelievable.
It looks beautiful.
Fascinating, really.
And it's about time.
Congratulations on that. That's a, that's a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
That people don't understand the work involved.
They don't. And you know, I, I say it time and time again, every time I'm in there, which is every week, that if people could just see the complexity of the, the project and see what's, they're never going to see above the ceiling and in the walls and under the floor. It's just, it's unbelievable.
And everything has to, there's a decision to be made on everything.
Yep.
The color of a tile, the color of a lockout, the size of everything. And it just never ends.
We're, we're going to take the opportunity to come up and take a private-
Yeah, you should do that. It's, it's really beautiful, so.
Thank you.
Great, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to see you, Jerry.
Nice to see you, Judy.
Now we're going to see who's buying dinner.
Well, that was great. Very informative, excellent to hear. It's always good to get that update.
I know.
Yeah, excellent stats, too. So next, let's move back to continued business, and we have an update on our school project. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. The last secondary school building committee meeting was held on Tuesday, February eleventh. I was a little late arriving for the construction update because our pre-meeting lasted a little bit of, over our intended ending time, so I'm going to ask Mr. Venezia if he could provide a, a brief update on the construction.
Yeah, I, I think the most notable thing is that the, uh, construction team, contractor got in there over the school vacation, and they were able to remove all of the windows in the middle school, uh, on the wall that's going to butt and be part of Main Street. So all those windows, as you come in from the gym side, on the two-story middle school section have been removed. The mitigation was done, I think, whatever, asbestos was in the caulking and everything.
That's right.
So those are all open, and the reason for that is they, they want to get started in getting that wall ready so that it'll be ready when school opens in September. Uh, the other thing that I noticed when I was in there on Saturday, and I think was mentioned by Joanna at the meeting, is that the, uh, the equipment for the kitchen is coming in, and it's there. Some of it's onsite, some of it's actually being installed. Ceiling tiles are starting to be placed in the ceilings in A Building and for, the, the ones that are cut cliff for various things to come through. Uh, so the ceiling tiles are going in. The auditorium on Saturday, they had a significant crew working in there, primarily electricians. They are moving towards getting the electrical done and the, the sound equipment and everything. I still think they're probably what, about at least a month or more away from starting to remove the staging that's in there. Probably six, six weeks or so. Most of the glasswork is done. They're outside, even in this weather, doing the, the roof overhangs and working on those. It's, um, it's, again, remarkable the progress that you see every week. I don't know if, Cliff has anything further or?
I, I shouldn't jump ahead of Janine's favorite part, when we were walking through Main Street, there's no door now to go through, to go across the bridge into the-
Temporary.
Into the academic wing. It's just opened straight through into the academic wing because that's now enclosed.
Yeah.
Uh, it doesn't have a roof on it, so it leaks around, around the roof drain areas, but it, it's enclosed. The, uh, the whole building, whole academic wing is being heated with the permanent-
Boiler number one.
Permanent facilities.
Yeah.
Uh, and as you said, the, the ceiling tiles are, are going in where there's cutouts for detectors and, and, uh, sprinkler heads, all those kinds of things. It's truly a shaping up, it's, it's really a-
I think the other thing you notice most, Cliff, too, is that the, the amount of sheet rock work that's been done, like on Main Street, everything's pretty much sheet rocked in. And the auditor, the auditorium is crazy, I mean, they've got the, uh, the catwalk and then they've got the stair thing that goes all the way up, it's got to be, what, forty to fifty feet off the ground, and we go up to the, with, I guess there's going to be lighting equipment and, you know, sound equipment and stuff, and it's, it's amazing.
And the, the coring of the, the holes in the floor under the seats is ongoing, even though the staging is in place.
Staging is up, yeah.
These folks are working in pretty narrow spots.
Yeah, I'm going to go count all those holes on it.
That's part of the catch-up process.
Could you explain that, you said the windows are, I'm just confused on the windows are out of the middle school, but I-
No, no, not the end of those.
The, the actual windows, you know, those, whatever they were, I don't know, they're glass or plastic, you can hardly see through them, but it's, the windows on the two-story, with, the, the wall, it's going to be part of Main Street. They removed all those windows.
Right.
And they took out whatever caulking and asbestos and some of the brick in there.
Right.
Because that's going to be done, that's, that's going to be part of the, the Main Street when the high school opens in September, so that's got to be refinished. I don't know if they're putting windows in-
So that's, but what is it right now in the middle school? Is it a hallway in the middle school?
They, they basically put like, I think-
Oh, they put a wall up. Like they did in the library.
Yeah.
They put plywood, yeah.
I get it.
Just put plywood across those things.
You can't see in there.
Seal it up, put plywood across it. Um, at least one of the teachers has got a, a, a paper window in it, with the sun and the horizon.
I mean, we took their windows, but their windows, to be honest with you, we just looked and-
Couldn't see from any, well, it was pretty dirty. Right, and the chairs were down. To film it, you can't even see.
But they've knocked off the little fins that came out.
Right, the red, the red fins on the walls.
And, and that is, there, there was also a place there for the, for the ventilator, for the ventilation.
That's chopped out.
Heating system, that's, that's been picked out, and there will be new windows going in there that will look into Main Street.
Right.
And they will set those in, and then there'll be a whole wall in the finished Main Street whole wall that will be there for the opening of the, of the high school.
Right.
And then on the other side, they'll be able to take the plywood down and move ahead with, with the middle school because they'll have a, a barrier in separating the two schools then.
There's a lot of work on Saturdays going on in there right now.
They also have the cooling tower in place for the, and the chillers are in place, and they're piping up the chillers. It's moving right along rapidly.
Anything else, Janine?
No, he stole my thunder.
No.
My, my big thing was like, whoa.
The doors guy.
Yeah, it was really unique.
Well, the, the last thing to go in the exterior of the building are all the doors because they're using those spaces to get stuff in and out of the building, so when you go by there, you'll see almost all the doors are wooden, temporary doors, and everything else is really falling into shape, you know.
When they take those away, it's really nice.
Yes.
Okay.
That's great. At that meeting, invoices were also approved, and at approximately six-ten, SSBC entered into executive session to discuss the deployment of security devices and strategies with respect there, too, and then reconvened in open session. The next regular meeting of the secondary school building committee will be scheduled for tomorrow night, February twenty-fifth, beginning at five-thirty PM in the high school modular factory.
Okay. Any more questions, comments? All right, thank you, Kathy. Okay, next we have discussion on two thousand fourteen, fifteen half-day kindergarten program.
Yes, thank you. We recently completed kindergarten registration for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year, and this was held in all three schools. And then I met with the elementary principals to review the distribution of full day and half-day requests for next year. And this year was the first time that I've encountered some of this information that I'm going to share with you this evening. What I provided for you in, in your packet was a comparison of this year's total enrollment of students in both full day and half-day sessions at each of the schools in their kindergarten programs. And it's very early on in the kindergarten registration process because typically, following our formal kindergarten registration, we will have people either move into town or they've missed this registration opportunity and will register their child from now until the opening of school next year. So these numbers that you see for two thousand fourteen, fifteen for each of the schools will fluctuate. By how much, we do not know.
I was going to say, do we have any trends that show what percentage of students we add after the official-
There's really no rhyme or reason. It depends on who moves into town, who moves out of town. It has nothing to do with the birth rate because that's what's reflected in what you in what you see in front of you now. So it depends very much on...
But like, so do you know last year what number you had after registration?
I don't see any.
Then we ended up with 180. Do you know what we had after the regular registration?
Yes, we have that information. But some children move out that had intended to come, and other children move in.
I'm assuming it's almost always higher at the end than it is after the registration?
A little, but not always.
Okay.
Not always. And sometimes, at one school over another, you'll see a higher... last year, I was surprised at the number of students that moved in at the little school. Lots of times, you'll see the number fluctuate at the hood school, because we have a large facility of apartments where we have people move in and move out more frequently. But we had more people move in last year at the little school than we did at the hood school. So it's really not as predictable as we would like it to be. That being said, you can see that this year at the bachelor's school, we have 73 students enrolled in our kindergarten program with two full-day classes and two half-day classes. Next year, the enrollment at this point is 56 students, with enough parents requesting a full-day program so that we can populate two sessions, with the remaining number of students being in one half-day. So we have one less half-day program at the bachelor at this point in time for next year. If you take a look at the hood school, this year's enrollment is 46. We've already seen an increase of enrollment at the hood school next year, so that will go up to 51. This year, we have one full-day class and one half-day class of kindergarten. Next year, we have enough parents requesting full day to have two full-day programs at the hood with 13 students remaining in a half-day program. So we have one more full-day program at the hood for next year. At the little school, this year, we have 61 students enrolled. And next year, we have, at this point in time, only 43 students enrolled for kindergarten. This year, we have two full-day classes and one half-day class. At the little school, we have one full-day class, and then we have one half-day class. Now, at the little school, we have approximately nine students on a waitlist who would like full day. But we can't open another full-day session with only nine students. It's just not cost-effective.
Is that nine out of the 23 who are in the half-day right now?
Nine out of the 23 in the half-day, correct.
What about the other two schools? Is anybody there on the waitlist?
We've accommodated the requests at this point in time, Jerry, but that does not mean that we won't have students move in who also want full day, who could attend, and we did this this year, who could attend a full-day program in another school.
And on the full day, you don't want to exceed what number of classes?
We are trying to keep our numbers around 2021, and we also reserve spaces for children who may require a full-day program through an individualized education program. So we don't oversubscribe the full day, because we know that we're going to have students that will need a place in the full-day program. So if you recognize that we have one less half-day session at the bachelor as of now, and one more full-day program at the hood school as of now, we have space for another half-day session at the bachelor. And we'd need to add another kindergarten space at the hood school to accommodate a third kindergarten program. So as a result of what I have presented to you, I'm asking that we consider relocating one half-day session of kindergarten from the hood school, the entire half-day session from the hood, to the bachelor's school. Since the bachelor is already set up for two half-day sessions and will be down one half-day session next year, it's more cost-effective to move the entire half-day session from the hood to the batch, rather than outfit and try to locate another classroom and purchase all those necessary materials and supplies to outfit a third kindergarten classroom at the hood school for next year. So if the enrollment at the little school for the next two years stays as is, we will, again, as I already mentioned, reduce the full-day program by one, but we'd need to watch the enrollment in the half-day session. It's already high. I consider it high. And we'd likely need to add a second session or redistrict any new enrollments from the little school to the bachelor's school, either the AM or the PM session if the hood session moves over to the batch. So there's lots of logistical what-ifs. It's still early on, but I think it's important, early on, for the committee to know what we are considering and recognizing that we're trying to be cost-effective, yet keep children from a neighborhood school together and move that whole session to another school, so that they will still have peers when they move back to the hood school in grade one. They'll have been with their peers just at the bachelor and not at the hood. So they'll still be making their friends from their neighborhood school in the half-day. Questions? I'm sure you have a lot to use in.
Cliff? One of the things we've run into before with this is a problem with siblings being in different schools.
Yes.
And that for parents trying to be in too many schools, that when they get into older, when they're older, it's easier to be in different schools. But with these, with this age kid, it's a little harder. I think, I understand the logistics of that, the problem that organizing that that creates.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that that ought to be a factor you put somewhere in the back of your mind as you're...
It's a very good point. We have not done the study yet to see how many of those 13 students in the half-day session at the hood school have siblings in upper grades. That would be a next step.
I have a question of what... is there a room available at the hood? Or are you telling us there isn't a room available? And if there is, what's the cost of using it and outfitting it, as opposed to moving the students to the batch? Would there be additional transportation costs if we move these students from the hood to the batch?
No, because these are half-day programs, so we run buses. We'd run those buses now, because we had two sessions at the batch this year. So we'd be running two buses again for next year. But I'm hearing the concern around the siblings. You really need to take a close look of that. I understand, you know, the concerns that people would have around that. As far as the room is concerned at the hood, I would really need to walk through with Glenn McKay, principal of the hood school, and see what we might have for a location for another half-day program or another full-day program, because we have a half-day program there now.
I fundamentally support what you're trying to do here, but I think if it was a minimal cost, and the spaces available, I personally would prefer to keep them at the...
Keep them at the school.
At the school. And Karen raised an interesting point here when we were chit-chatting. I don't think we have to take a vote on this, do we?
No, but I wanted to involve you in the discussion. You have historical information about what you might have done in the past and other considerations, whether it was another kindergarten program or a preschool program, moving from the three schools to the one. So I thought it was important for me to hear some of your suggestions and/or experiences that you've had in the past around this issue. This is new for me.
Cliff raised the issue of the siblings. I think, was that prior to Kathy, we had that issue before?
I can't remember, but I know...
I think on half-day...
Do you remember that?
When they... yeah, we've had that discussion in the past. On the half-day kindergarten, are the kindergarten students going in the morning, on the morning, regular morning bus? In other words, when they get picked up in the morning, are they on the regular morning bus with the other kids?
Yes, they are.
Okay. But when they come home, obviously, they're by themselves, because they're getting dropped off by themselves.
That's correct.
And the same thing with the afternoon, they'd be going by themselves. So it's only one trip, one way, that they're not with a sibling. And then there's really no interaction with the sibling when they're at the school anyway. So I don't, I mean, I don't think it's a traumatic thing. How are the kindergarten facilities at the hood? Do they have the room? Are they as nice as what's at the bachelor's?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
I think the, what I've heard parents talk to me about, if we had to redistrict, and we have, if they have a sibling, the parents feel torn in attending the events at two schools as opposed to one. And I think that's the sibling issue.
I've never been to an event.
There were two or three.
Two or three.
You know, they feel, it's the two PTAs, they want to feel connected to schools.
You've never missed a musical. Come on.
So I understand that.
Do you happen to know which school is going to be the late school? Because that would go into effect, too, wouldn't it?
All right.
Yes, it would.
Because the batch is the late school, right?
The batch is on opposite schedule of the hood and the little one. So this year, the batch is the late school.
Yeah, that's correct.
Or is it the... it's just opposite the hood and the little.
What's the little? Is it the late school next year?
This year, we have the bachelor as the early school. So next year, the hood and the little will be the early schools.
And that would cause a problem if you're trying to put hood kids sibling mice, if you're, you know what I'm saying? So a bus might have to come to a house twice.
Right, right.
Because you're picking up batch kids and then coming back.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Right. Good point.
Yep.
Busing, early school, late school.
How soon do you have to make this decision?
I... we have time.
Because I'd like to see that the numbers shake out a little more, because we may... what if we add 15 more students? We might have to make, you might have to make other adjustments, so...
Absolutely. This is very early, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, because it is complicated. But I want you to be aware that these conversations are taking place right now between the administrators and me.
And I think, I mean, we need to be as cost-effective as possible, also with an eye toward, you know, looking out for the parents and what their wants and needs might be also.
Right, exactly. There's a practicality piece.
It has been done before. I want to state it was around 2,000, because the batch kindergarten, the entire kindergarten program was hosted at the hood.
But it was the entire program?
It was the entire program.
Okay. So just wanted to make you aware. I think you've given me a few things to consider and look into, and I will do that, and I will keep you posted.
One other question. What's the minimum number of students you need to open another full-day session? You said you had nine on the waiting list.
Nineteen.
Yeah, nineteen for to cover its cost.
Okay.
Because it's tuition-based, so Michael has run the numbers.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Minutes. We have one set of minutes from the January 27th meeting. I reviewed them. I did not find any errors, so unless anybody else has found anything.
Move to approve.
You have a second. Motion by Karen, second by Cliff, in discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? unanimous. No budget update, correct, Michael?
That's correct.
No staffing?
None at this time.
We did have, we have one donation, and it's for the middle school. It's the recommended... it's the North Reading School District seeks our acceptance of a $2,080 gift from middle school parents to provide financial assistance for students to attend the eighth-grade trip to Washington DC. And I will entertain a motion to accept with gratitude.
Accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion by Cliff, second by Karen. Very generous donations.
Very.
Any further discussion?
I wish they were going to Disney World. They're not.
That's the high school, not the middle.
I know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Foes? unanimous. Subcommittee updates? We haven't had any subcommittee meetings, correct?
That's correct.
I just have a question for the policy subcommittee. So I drafted the social networking policy, and you're meeting, you're definitely meeting this week?
We are.
Were you, is it on the agenda to review that?
No, we had said we were going to. We weren't sure when we would be able to get any feedback, so we said the March date.
Right. Okay. So I just wanted to check, because I was operating on that schedule, but I am almost done, so I could send you what I have.
Good, that'd be great.
Beforehand, if you want. Okay.
Excellent.
Perfect. And you'll see on this, on your report, that the evaluation subcommittee really should reconvene, because it's time to discuss the self-evaluation of the school committee and prepare the timeline for administering and collecting for this year.
Who's on that now?
That is a good question.
You, me and Janine?
Yes, Janine and Mel. So we really should schedule a meeting to come together.
Okay.
Maybe after this meeting, we could find a date.
All right.
Okay.
And we have athletic policy subcommittee is this week, Wednesday, athletics subcommittee March 11th, finance planning team March 14th, and we'll set a date for the evaluation subcommittee.
Point now in the conversation about the identified concerns. So recently, superintendents received a letter from the president/CEO of NEASC outlining their progress to date in developing a reform agenda. I find this to be encouraging in response to these concerns. So a copy of the letter that I received is included in your packet. And a group of superintendents will be attending a meeting with NEASC this week to have a conversation about this reform agenda. An additional meeting has been scheduled, so that principals can also provide input. And Mr. John Bernard will be attending that meeting on March 12th, having, he'll have just completed the NEASC process.
I was going to ask, can we continue us till this is decided, and that way we don't have to go on Sunday?
No. We are going, and we are moving forward. We are well into the process.
You might want to bring that letter, or you don't want to say...
Yeah, I'm going to bring it, say, hey.
You're not allowed to speak during...
I probably shouldn't. Yeah, you hope for a snow day on Sunday?
I probably shouldn't. Do your homework.
Yeah, exactly.
But I just, this is, again, a point of information for you to know, that these conversations are ongoing. I believe you saw a piece that had been included in the transcript, I think, a couple of months ago, on reading, having stopped going through the process at this time. So this is for your information, and I'll keep you posted. But we are moving full steam ahead with our NEASC evaluation.
And I'd recommend that we, members, if we try to get there at the school around 2 o'clock on Sunday, because we're scheduled to meet with them at 2:15, right?
I'm going to be there at 1:55.
Okay, that'll be great. You can set everything up for us.
There will be a welcome that will be done at 1 by a panel, and Mr. Bernard and I will just speak very briefly. But that will provide an overview, and students have worked over the last several months to put together a video presentation for the visiting team.
Oh, that starts at 1, okay.
So that starts at 1, and then your interview follows. And then there is a welcome reception at 4:15 in the afternoon, I believe, for parents, students, and faculty. That will be held in the cafeteria from 4:15 to 5:15 to meet the visiting team.
I'd suggest if you're not there at 1 o'clock, you have no commitment.
Jeez, thanks, Cliff.
That's really, beautifully impressive.
What about us people who are going to church during the morning?
I have one other.
Unbelievable.
Is that it? Any more, Mr. E. Port?
That is it for me.
Correspondence?
None.
I had one thing. I actually had seen this on boston.com today and printed it out. And within 10 minutes of printing it out, I had gotten two emails from North Reading residents with the same article. It was a brief article talking about some districts using, quote, "virtual school days" to replace snow days for some schools. The interesting thing was, the article did not discuss whether the state approves of this and whether you still have to make up the days or not.
You do. You still have to make up the days. You're required to attend physically 180 days. There are some independent schools that are exploring this virtual school, but they have not, they have not verified that that will take place of an actual school day.
So this article referenced Coyle Cassidy High School in Taunton, and it said, "Before predicted snowstorm, teachers arm students with assignments still need to complete should they be stuck at home. School officials also warn parents that students have enough work to do to fill a school day." But as I said, it doesn't mention anything about...
It doesn't independent school.
Coyle Cassidy, is that a private school?
Yes.
I've also seen some public schools talking about this. But, but again, right now, it requires physical presence at the school.
That's correct.
Okay.
But interesting article.
I think at some point, that'll change when there's more technology in place, and we can actually have students doing their work at home on...
Well, the Chatter School document report, they're proposing virtual schools.
Right.
That's correct.
They'll be going to high school online, for God's sakes.
When all of our students have access to internet at home and have their own machines, then we can maybe start thinking about those things.
It's an equity issue.
It's a very big equity issue.
Okay. Anything else? All right. This time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Foes? unanimous. Good night.